Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February the 8th, 2018, and may I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have Board President announcements, and I have no major announcements at this time, so I'd like to call on Township Manager Richard Manfredi for some presentations.
Thank you, President Luker. As everyone on the board knows, and as everyone here knows, February 1st, actually January 31st, there were a number of directors who retired. And we began many, many months ago in planning for that retirement. In some cases, departments had begun succession planning. While there's often recognition for many, and they are recognized on a regular basis, when people retire, directors perhaps aren't really thought of on their way out, and then maybe to get a watch, and that's the end of it. Given the tenure of the people who've retired and their commitment to Abington Township to make it the place that it is that we, including me, are privileged to serve in, we thought it was appropriate from the manager's office and from the Board of Commissioners to just give a brief sign of appreciation through a citation to those individuals. Two of those individuals are here with us this evening. John Livingston, now retired Chief of Police; Ed Michelau, now retired Director of Public Works; and those who could not be here this evening but will still be recognized with a citation, and in two cases, delivered to them at some other date by people close to them, and in another, perhaps in March. Those are Eileen Marks, who we'll say is, was Ed Michelau's assistant, for many will probably say the brains of the operation. Certainly, an extremely talented administrator. Ken Clark, longtime Fire Marshal Detective. And Larry Mateo, longtime Director of Code Enforcement. So with us this evening are John Livingston and Ed Michelau. We're going to begin by recognizing Chief John Livingston. Commissioner Schreiber, if you would, please.
But you are well worth it. It's been a pleasure working with you. Whereas John A. Livingston has been a member of Abington Township Police Department for 45 years, starting on September 4th, 1972, as a police officer, promoted to Sergeant in 1981, assigned as a detective sergeant in 1982, became commander of the Detective Division in 1985, promoted to Lieutenant in 1987, designated as Deputy Chief in 1990, and Chief of Police in 2017. And whereas John Livingston has testified in front of the PA House of Representatives Committee on Consumer Affairs, and in front of the House Judiciary Committee, has served as a member of the Board of Directors of Abington Township Police Pension Fund Association, the National Association of Bunko Investigators, Chair of MPOETC, and where as John A. Livingston has represented the Abington Township Police Department by protecting and serving with pride, and has represented the Abington Township Board of Commissioners and the people of the Township of Abington with honor and integrity, which you certainly have. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, this 8th day of February 2018, that John A. Livingston be remembered for his countless accomplishments and achievements, and for serving all people of the Township of Abington with respect and dignity, and is herewith recognized by this formal expression of gratitude and with thanks, the appreciation of the Township Manager and the Township Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington.
Thank you. I thank you all. Thank you very, very much. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Schreiber, President Luker, and all the Board of Commissioners for putting your trust and faith in me to lead this fine police department. Abington Township is just a wonderful place to live and work, and I wouldn't be anywhere else. So I'm not going anywhere, so I'm still going to be a resident of Ward 1 in Abington Township, looking forward to it. I'll still be there, Commissioner Klein. And thank you all, once again. It's been my honor, and it's been a privilege to serve you. Thank you.
The next individual, I have to take a few minutes, but before we begin on that, I have to say what a tremendous honor and privilege in the short time we had together to serve with you. Truly a gentleman, and really, the epitome of what a Chief of Police is. You know, I grew up, my history begins with public works. Started off 10 or 11 years old, cleaning loots on paving crews, running a wheelbarrow, a one-ton roller on driveways, on modified. Spent a lot of time in that world. Spent a lot of time in the transportation, construction industry. And in my first week, when I, on the job, I toured the public works facility. And for those who have no appreciation of what a public works facility is in the public sector, you need to take a look at Abington Township's public works yard and their operation. I knew, the minute I walked through that yard, that it was a first-class, not just by the Township Codes classification, but a first-class, first-rate operation, led by someone who cared deeply about the place they lived and served. So with that, I'm going to ask Commissioner Hecker, Chair of the Public Works Committee, to come up.
Ed, I've only had the privilege of working with you for these past four years, but I know I speak on behalf of all my colleagues. Your service has made this community a better place, and it's been our honor to work with you. I can tell you that I went back and actually looked at a number of our email exchanges over the last four years, and it's always the same answer, "I'll take care of it." And you did, time and again, and we're grateful. So on behalf of the township, whereas Ed Michelau started as a laborer in the Highway Department on September 18, 1972, was promoted to Assistant Mechanic on May 10, 1973, then Full Mechanic on June 12, 1978, and promoted to Public Works Director on May 6, 1989, and whereas Ed Michelau has served as Chair of the Township Safety Committee and implemented standards and procedures to improve worker safety and reduce taxpayer costs. Whereas Ed Michelau built the premier public works department in not only Montgomery County, but in southeastern PA, delivering streets, snowplows, trash, and recycling services, benefiting a first-class township. Whereas Ed Michelau was the catalyst for the township to receive millions of dollars in federal and state grants that helped Abington residents to have a great quality of life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, that this 8th day of February 2018, that Ed Michelau be remembered for his countless achievements, and for serving all people of the Township of Abington with respect and distinction, and is herewith recognized by this formal expression of gratitude and thanks by the Township Manager and the Township Board of Commissioners of the Township of Abington. And I'm going to ask his daughter Terry to come up to officially give the citation to Ed.
This is dangerous thing to me, of those that know. So if somebody wants to say, "Three minutes are up," I don't have a problem with that, as they did a few days ago. I want to thank current and past managers in Abington Township. I want to thank current board and past boards in Abington Township for allowing us, in the Public Works Department, to think outside the box, take chances, and change things for the better for Abington Township as best as we could. And over the years, it has worked tremendously, to a point where, across the state of Pennsylvania, and for the most part, across the United States, people know Abington Township. They really know Abington Township for the things we've accomplished here, our recycling programs, some other programs that we've done here. It allowed us to take a chance and try a hybrid recycling program, trash program, pay-as-you-throw. It was, hadn't been tried, been talked about a lot of places, hadn't been tried. The board allowed us to take a chance to do it, and took us a little while to get it going. Started 2006, got it finished by the end of 2007, and since then, it has proven to be a boon to Abington Township. The dollars we've saved, efficiencies we put into the program, allowed us to reduce costs to the residents, and allow them to control what they pay for refuse fees. Many other programs we started, I'm not going to go through all of them, but every year, every two years, we find something different and something new. The current overlay program we're doing, it's amazing. Angelo is doing a tremendous job with that, and the people, the employees that work for Abington Township, work for the Public Works Department, Highway Department, are all should be commended for the hard work, the efforts, and the dedication they do to make every day a great day in Abington Township for our services. I want to thank two people in particular, who made my job easy. We were a trio, and both of them, Eileen Marks and Angelo, I've worked with for over 30 years, hand in hand, side by side, and we always worked, anything, if an idea came up, they both did everything they possibly could to make it happen. Over time, I've had a lot of other people working, there were management, I thank all of them too, but the two of these, those two people made my life easy, and made the Abington Township a much better place than when we started. I want to thank my family, my daughter, my grandkids, seven of them. I did my life. I enjoy my grandkids beyond comprehension. I enjoy my entire family beyond comprehension. Other than that, like I could go on for days and days, I really could. But I just want to thank everybody. I'm proud of work for Township. I don't think there was a day that I didn't want to come into Abington Township to work. I loved my job. It was fun, aggravating at times, but it was still fun. Like I said, there wasn't one day that I did not want to come to work. And it's hard to leave, but I'm working hard at it. So I want to thank everybody again, thank those that work for me, the employees that work for us over the years, those that currently work for us. This township should be very proud of every one of them, because they come in there, they work hard, they're dedicated, they're loyal, and they have, they, let me complain, not that much. But they are dedicated employees. So thank you all very much. I appreciate this honor, and have a good night.
Just a reminder to some, you may see that gold vehicle still driving around, as he's going to manage some special projects on a part-time basis for us. So with that, President Luker, we will make sure that these citations for Mr. Mateo and Ms. Marks are delivered to them, honoring them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi. Job well done. Thank you, sir. And to Chief Livingston and Ed Michelau, thank you. If the families want to leave at this moment, we'll take a five-minute recess, make it two minutes. Thank you. We'll resume our meeting, and at this time, I'd like to call on public comment on agenda items by the public. Anyone who wishes to speak on any agenda items, please feel free to come to the podium, state your name, and please adhere to our Board Policy Speaking Rules of three minutes. Thank you.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So first of all, I want to just share a correction, because when I was talking about the YMCA and the numbers on the acreage, I said that 16 was where 225, or 225 was going where 16 should be. That was, 16 was a per acre thing. So I'm just making a correction. I made, I misspoke last time, and I just wanted to make sure I got that correction in. On the agenda tonight is the municipal tax liens. I asked to have information on that from the manager, my commissioner, who never answers. I have received no information. It's the simplest thing. Mr. Clark said there was a sentence that required them to turn these liens into loans. The word loans is not even in the act that he's quoting. So I've asked to see where that is. I read the act. In fact, it seems to say quite the opposite. So if there is a sentence in there that I'm missing, I would very much like to have that read tonight. So read for the public to hear, because I believe you're putting, you're subordinating those loans, putting us in second position, and they shouldn't be. They should be in first position, and you're doing it to help one person, which is going to make a difference in a whole lot of properties. Those properties were financially analyzed before the loans were made, and that would change that financial analysis. I also want to say that the layout of the agenda, which is an agenda item, okay, has changed to become completely obtuse. We had before, at our committee meetings, we went through the agendas, and now they are all mixed up in the other side, which means anybody who wanted to find an item or see what was missing would have to go through all of it. There was no such thing as consent items before. That's a new thing. Last time, with the speaking rules, I suggested that this was not the speaking rules. Mr. Manfredi shook his head to somebody and said, "Oh, yes, they were." The word consent items doesn't even appear in speaking rules. So we have a lot of things that are just going on that are not in the interests of the public. When the agenda is made more confusing for the public, instead of less confusing, that's problematic, okay? So I would like to see that fixed. Also, the school item is up. I definitely, again, would like to see permit, the school is a completely separate entity, and there's no reason for permit fees to be washed and ignored. So they shouldn't be waived. And I am concerned about the fact that an employee put that on to the agenda.
Thank you.
That's, that's a huge concern.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public, please? Name for the record, and three minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Suzanne Quigley, 1448 Jericho, have lived in Highland Farms for 23 years, so I've never been here, so I'm new to this, but I'm one of the corner properties affected by the potential changing the intersection from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. And the reason why I came is I know that there was some concern over making it that. I've lived there, I think there has been, I don't know the exact number, but 50, at least. I mean, there has been accident after accident, because either people think it's a four-way stop, and they don't realize the people don't have, it's just a horrible accident. I don't know how many of you have traveled it, but it is bad. So something needs to be done about it. I think a four-way stop is the best, but if engineers say differently, but I think something has to be done, and living on that corner property, I'm in favor of it. Is, is that, okay?
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the public on agenda items?
Hello, my name is Khaki Evans. I live at 1132 Lindsay Lane, and I'm here on behalf of our Township Environmental Advisory Council. I'm a member. Last week, when we had the discussion about the school district having the new addition, I just wanted to clarify some information. I sent an email this evening to the school district, and I really much prefer to give praise in public, which I will lavish upon the school district. If it wasn't for the school district, we wouldn't have our, Township would never have been a Star Certified community, and give opportunities for improvement. So there might be a slight opportunity for improvement here, and that's why I came to talk to you. A LEED building as a new construction, I believe whoever gave the information that the school district said it's only, that you get a plaque for a year, that is not correct. New construction, it's indefinite. What this, the building would have to do, the school district would have to submit usage of energy and water. That's all it takes, once it was certified. So, you know, I'm here to give you that information. I didn't want you guys to think that we are this outrageous tree-hugging group that makes these outrageous recommendations. We really want to see, and it's also based on our Star certification, and what were opportunities for improvement, in the discussion with the school district, the most important consideration, and it didn't come up. I always say, if you have your health, you're a millionaire. And really, a green building, a LEED building, the biggest opportunity is in indoor environmental quality. The fixtures, the carpets, the air, the heating and ventilation system. There's so much data to show how student health, how employee health, how reduced absenteeism, and I don't know if the school district and the board was able to take this information into their decision to not go for LEED certification. So I hope that, you know, perhaps with this other information, they will consider working with us on pursuing LEED certification. I would hope that if they change, that that wouldn't change your approval, which I imagine is going to happen tonight, and we're very happy to see that. But we are recommending LEED for health reasons. I would have liked to have gone to the school board last January and the presentations. I was living in New York at the time for eight months, but I can tell you that I had a wonderful opportunity in the eight months that I lived in Manhattan, because by night, I slept in the Hope Lodge of the American Cancer Society in Manhattan. My husband and I, we were both cancer patients at the, at Mount Sinai Hospital, and the cancer center there is a LEED building, and the cancer, or the Hope Lodge is also a LEED building, and you can, there's just such a big difference when you walk into a LEED building, the air, the ventilation, it's just, it was like Oasis every night that we went to the Hope Lodge and lived there. So it's not just, we're not just some flighty, environmental, tree-hugging group, but we really take our jobs very seriously. And I guess the opportunity going forward, I didn't want you guys, you know, there are, usually there's a lot of new construction in our township, but there may be some new construction, and this is certainly a project. So I didn't want you guys to think that we are just making these crazy recommendations. There's a good reason for it. We're very concerned about the health of the students, the health of any other occupants in a building. And going forward, we would like, if any time a new, a new building project, especially new construction, would become to the township, could you also not just share it with the Planning Commission, but also share it with our Environmental Advisory Council? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? If there are none, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is our Consent Agenda, and I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for a motion to approve the minutes and our motion for a Consent Agenda Item passage. Thank you.
Thank you, President Luker. And as this is the first time that we're using the Consent Agenda as part of our policies, it is written in our Consent Agenda Items of Business and Matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be a routine and non-controversial, and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by the Board of Commissioner, by Board of Commissioner members, that item is to be identified by the board member, and will be identified and removed from the Consent Agenda, and will be considered separately at the appropriate place in the agenda. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve items listed in the Consent Agenda, Consent Agenda Items A through K, except Item B, dealing with the Wireless Communication Ordinance, and ask that revisions be considered at the next Administrative Code and Land Use Committee on February 28th, and I so move.
Second. You've heard the motion. Are there any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? If there are none, others in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
They can discuss it at the 28th, but the agenda item has to be a date certain to March 8th. If it's not date certain March 8th, then it has to be re-advertised.
Then I will, then I will amend the motion to say that the, it'll be considered for discussion on, on the, at the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee on, on February 28th, and then put on the, on February 28th, and then put on the March 8th Board of Commissioners meeting for a hearing.
Okay, you've heard the amended motion?
Second.
Can I move to second? Any Commissioner, a vaing?
I don't understand what the amendment was, the motion.
The wireless ordinance, because it was advertised for this evening, has to be tabled to a date certain, and not just tabled generally. If we tabled it generally, then we would have to re-advertise, or go through the whole process again. By tabling it to a date certain, we're not required to re-advertise. We can just move it to March 8th.
So we're voting on, the motion is to vote on the remaining items on the Consent Agenda?
And to move that. And to move that item to March 8th.
That's correct.
Okay, you've heard the amendment motion. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
That concludes the consent agenda. I'll throw it back to President Luker.
Thank you very much, Vice President Klein. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, and we have no unfinished business on the agenda this evening, so we'll move right into new business, and I call on Commissioner Van Sanchez, Director of Code and Land Use Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have several items this evening, the first of which is a motion to approve the land development application submitted by Abington School District for the construction of a number of additions to the senior high school building totaling 183,337 square feet, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Klein, and then Commissioner Sanchez, and then Commissioner Rothman.
So I did want to make one clarification. So the, Ms. Evans talked about from the EAC, which I appreciate her comments, and the desire for lead. It's my understanding under the SALDO that we do not have a provision that requires lead certification, and therefore, under land development approval, it's not something that can hold up land development. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, a clarification on, on this point, that there is a, an issue with the availability of EDUs, and we just want to, it's not something that we would condition the land development upon this evening. We just wanted to be clear that with our approval, you would be proceeding at your own risk until those UNOs are obtained, because you might not ultimately be able to obtain the UNOs for the project, but just wanted to be clear about that, and I think everyone understands. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
I would just like to echo Ms. Evans' comments regarding consideration for lead and/or other ways to look into improvement of air quality. I think it is a big issue. I think we're early in the overall evolution of understanding these problems long-term, so if that's something that we have the opportunity to look into, I would strongly encourage that we do that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner's opponent, Commissioner.
Tom, thank you. Going through this line item here, I came across something that's saying stormwater fees will be waived. My questions are, how much are these fees? Can you answer that, and why are we waiving them?
The fees are not part of the motion, and you're not waiving fees this evening. You tabled until the date when we set aside and have a separate discussion on the waiver of fees. This was just backup information, this, when it was first generated. So it's not included in the motion to waive fees only to approve the plan. So you'll deal with the fee waived at a later date.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Just echoing on some of the other comments that we heard here tonight, as the sole lead AP sitting on this board, I just want to urge the school board to, again, consider making this project a lead certified project. I don't really see a downside to it. I think it's a great thing for this community. I think it's a great thing for the students of the schools, and I think it will only have positive benefits moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for commissioners? Okay, you've heard the motion. It's been moved to second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Next, we have a motion to establish a policy for subordinating the township's liens on those properties to mortgages held by banks or other lenders, authorizing the township manager to execute the appropriate HUD loan agreements where the loan is treated as a mortgage and will be recorded as such, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Comments from commissioners? From staff? Commissioner Vahie?
So I, I understand the conundrum on their PA law, but this is, we're administering a HUD program, correct?
Correct.
So do these, the matter in which you're proposing to subordinate loans, is it complying with the Fed regulations on this?
It, it does. And I, the issue is HUD gives us this money, and we use it, we pass along this money to homeowners in the township. How we secure the money is within, partially within the discretion of the township and the way we do it. The manner in which we have been doing it, by listing these loans as liens, is what has been the problem and what problem really came to fruition within the last year on one particular project. So that's why it's our recommendation that we're going to start recording these as loans, which they properly are, and not as liens, which they are not.
One follow-up question. The, I imagine we have several liens or improperly filed liens out there currently. Should we undertake an effort to track those downs and correct it?
I think that's one of the things that my office is working on with, with Mr. Struther, to identify which ones are out there and which ones would be more easily convertible into, into loans as opposed to leaving them as liens.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bowman.
And just staying with that, Solicitor Clark, what can be categorized as a lien is a subject of state law, correct?
That is correct. What can be categorized as a lien is covered by the Municipal Claims and Tax Law Act, commonly referred to as the MCTLA.
And these would not qualify as liens?
They do not qualify as liens. That's where we ran into the problem several months ago.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Oh, Commissioner, Mr. Manfredi.
Commissioner, and just to follow this through, the other piece of this would be authorizing me to enter into those because they're considered contracts, and I need authorization into, into, into those contracts.
Understood.
Just to.
Okay, you ready to vote?
Would you please read the text?
No. Ms. Lehman, sit down, please. You're out of order. Ms. Lehman, you're out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item, we have a motion to appoint three members to the planning commission for terms expiring in 2021. As the board knows, the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee conducted interviews among advertised applicants for this, these positions, and based on those interviews, we are recommending to fill the planning commission vacancies Ms. Kathy Gauthier, Mr. Daryl Baker, and Mr. Stephen Boff for the planning commission terms expiring 2021, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved in favor. Any comments from commissioners?
Question?
Commissioner Myers.
Just a question. I, I know this is a new policy, but I'm a little confused because we're being asked to vote on people that we've never met or really know nothing about. Did we, and forgive me if I, I should know this, did we receive resumes on these folks?
Mr. Manfredi.
We did.
Okay.
We received their applications, and President Luker assigned it to the committee to review and make recommendations. We asked for letters of interest and resumes and background, and I believe they went to everyone.
Okay.
I can verify that tomorrow morning.
Okay. And, well, can I ask my question on the next motion, just to get it out of the way?
Of course.
Okay. I, I noticed on, for the zoning hearing board, that one of the members that's not being recommended or in the motion is, is a, someone that has been doing it. So have we abandoned our policy that if someone wants to stay on, that they're permitted to do that?
I was actually not aware of such a policy. We actually interviewed and ranked the candidates in our order of preference.
And maybe I said it wrong. It was always our custom to check with the existing members of each committee, every, every volunteer committee. I know zoning, they do get compensation, and if they want, if they wanted to stay on it for another term, that was really automatic. I mean, certainly those of you that have been on the board know that we have done this. If it's a change, and that's fine, we have, we're going through a lot of changes. I just think that maybe we should all be made aware of the different, the changes that are happening.
Okay. Any other questions from, thank you. Any other questions from commissioners?
I don't know.
Okay, now, did you make a motion for both?
It's been seconded.
It's, yeah. It's been seconded. Any other comments? Can I share a glass?
I'm just noticing that number four in planning commission, and it's also on the zoning hearing board.
It got selected for planning, it got selected for zoning.
The recommendation was for the top three.
Okay. Well, I've got my glasses on, I guess they're not.
Okay.
I'm looking through the wrong lens.
Commissioners, a bone?
Thank you.
As far as the resumes, I never got them.
I was.
I mean, it would have been helpful for us to review it, the full board review, the resumes, and make comments. I think that one.
I don't.
I do.
Manager, Manfredi said he was going to verify.
I'll have to verify in the morning if they went to just the committee that was reviewing them.
Right.
Or to everyone.
And they did an excellent job, so they were all qualified, good applicants, and they did an excellent job in rating them. So having said that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Continue, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have a motion to appoint a member to the zoning hearing board for a term expiring 2022. There is one opening in this case, and following the same procedure of the interviews, as just discussed, the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee selected Mr. Jose Castellina, and therefore, I make a motion to appoint him to the zoning hearing board for a term expiring 2022, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Vahie?
I just want to speak on behalf of Mr. Castellina. He's my constituent. He is a terrific person with background in zoning hearing board. He served on Roxborough Zoning Hearing Board. And I also want to add, in my ward, the suburban industrial zoning, which there's a big tract of undeveloped suburban industrial zoning, there are several permissible, several uses permitted by a special exemption, which goes directly to the zoning hearing board, and, you know, we would have less to say in that. And currently, the zoning, zoning hearing board is composed of good people, but all from places very far away from Ward 12 and Glen Side in general. And so I'm very excited to see someone from my neighborhood who will be directly impacted by any changes in that zoning district and would have a say in that. So I'm very enthusiastic, and I would ask for everyone's support of Mr. Castellina.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioners, a bone?
Can I find out how long this Jose Castellina has been on the planning commission? I don't believe he was at all. He wasn't at all?
No, just so everyone understands, the memo that I sent out on behalf of Commissioner Sanchez was just listing who applied for those four slots and enlisted the names that the committee recommended. So you see him in two places, not because he served on the planning commission, but because he applied for it.
I just want to make a comment, and I'm not here to attack anybody, but if you've been on the board for a long time, there's certain things that we did and we're all accustomed to. All these changes are coming through. Like, I would have loved to seen a resume on this gentleman. I, I just lost, I don't know what else to say.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And finally, Mr. President, we have a motion to appoint Ms. Amy Montgomery, Director of Engineering and Code, as Township Engineer in accordance with the Township of Abington's code, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Mr. Manfredi?
Yeah, I would ask that you make it effective March 5th.
I will make that motion to be effective March 5th, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any other comments from staff?
I just want to.
Vice President Klein?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm excited to work with Amy. I've had experience working with her both Sheltonham and Springfield, and I think she'll be a great addition to the township and somebody who will help us out in some of the transitions in, in the township, so looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Administrative Code and Land Use Committee for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanchez. At this time, Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, Public Affairs has one item. This is PA 4. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-014, establishing a policy authorizing the township manager and township solicitor to approve settling county assessment appeals negotiated by the Abington School District and setting a $5,000 threshold that requires Board of Commissioner approval, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Public Affairs Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, we'll call on Commissioner Lori Shriver, Director of Public Safety Committee.
Thank you very much. We have one item this evening. PS 2 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2152, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 11.3, right turn only at Horace Avenue West, at Edge Hill Road, and Section 14, stop intersections at Highland Avenue, three-way, all, Canterbury Road, Rockwell, both, and, and Jericho Road, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. First, I would like to apologize to Commissioner Spiegelman. In reference to the, yes, and this is why I called you. We were not able to connect, so I'm going to do it publicly. I would like to apologize. What I should have done before the committee meeting was called you and spoken to you about this particular issue that I had with Rockwellburg. Nothing else on that gen, motion, just, just Rockwellburg. I, I do apologize, and that will not happen again. I wasn't as prepared as I should have been, and that will never happen again. So I hope that you will accept my apology. I, my feelings haven't changed, but that's really not the point. You should not have been surprised by the way that I felt about this and the, on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Myers. I very much appreciate that.
Commissioner Gillespie?
I'm heading in the same direction. Ditto. Again.
Ditto.
It was the last thing there, and when I saw it, when I came in, I went, are you kidding? But we won't go there again.
Mr. Spiegelman?
Mr. President, my constituent neighbor and friend, Ms. Quigley, spoke on the, the issue of Jericho and Rockwell. She's a direct neighbor. I have 20 pages of emails and also some Facebook, Facebook messages and a couple of text messages that are from the last 24 hours, that are from residents who directly, who are corner residents or immediate nearby residents, who are, to understate, enthusiastically supportive of this safety upgrade that's proposed. These emails are, again, these are just from the last 24 hours. I ran out of paper. I am not going to read them all because, you know, we don't want to have that long a night, but I, I do have them if anyone is, is interested in perusing. And I hope that we will all do what one resident of the 1,400 block of Jericho recommends in her words, please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman?
Just a question, on the, on the right turn only at Horace Avenue, it says west. What's that, what's that reference to, the west part of it? So you're saying as you go up Horace, now you can only turn right?
You can only turn right, you can't turn left, as you're going uphill.
You're going west on Horace Avenue.
Sorry. All right, thank you.
Okay, you have any other?
You can go to my house. You can't go to other way.
Commissioner Myers?
I, I would like to add that, I'd like to thank Manager Manfredi because I felt that the letter from the Panoni Traffic Engineer that we got yesterday, had we had that for the committee meeting, it really would have made, been very different. And I think, and I think only the solicitor can answer this, I think that letter absolves us of any liability should that stop sign at the bottom, at the downhill part of Rockwell be a problem. be a problem.
Yes, it does, and a variety of other things do also, but having run this by our traffic engineer and having had our traffic engineer bless it, we, under the immunity that we have as a government entity, we don't have any liability.
And that was at the committee meeting, one of my concerns. So, that letter changes a lot of things. Thank you, Manager Man Freddy.
And I thank all the commissioners for their dialogue and making peace with this situation. It was a motion on the floor, and it was seconded.
If I may, one more comment. Just, you know, so everyone knows, we are going to be monitoring this intersection, evaluating it, collecting additional data, and the traffic engineer will be working with the police department, with the traffic safety unit, so that if, you know, there are any, somehow any undesired consequences to what is a very important and necessary safety upgrade, we will know about them immediately and be able to take corrective action right away instead of, you know, just kind of stumbling upon it later. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes the public safety agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Vice President Klein, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on the Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal, for the Treasurer's report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. I only have one report this evening, and that's the report dealing with the amount of monies deposited by various departments into Republic Bank for the month of January. As you can see, it's a total of $1,609,459, with an increase to the prior year of $460,278. I want to add one thing to this that may notice that the business privilege tax is a fairly high figure, $431,000. I was happy to finally collect, after trying for almost two years, $385,000 check from a company that I've been going after.
Wow.
So, that goose things up. It was very nice to have.
Thank you.
Thank you. As for, that's the good news. As for the bad news, is I mailed out the real estate taxes last Friday, on the second. If you haven't gotten them yet, please let me know. I had one person mail it on Saturday. We got it Monday. So, he got it Saturday, or she, and we got it the following Monday. So, some people are happy to pay their taxes on occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC 1, motion to approve investments for the month of December as previously circulated to the board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $1,585,000. Interest rate, yield, yields range from 1.6% to 1.75%, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? If there are none, all is in favor?
Roll call.
No, no.
That's a misprint. Roll calls next time.
We're going to move that down.
My bad. This time, you're bad.
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 2, expenditures, salaries, and wages, motion to approve December expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $3,73,922.94, and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,142,138.99, and authorize proper officials to sign vouchers and payments with bills and contracts as they mature through the month of March 2018, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Rossman.
Yes.
Do you see that?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rockwell. Pepper?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Plasky?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
And that concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. That concludes our formal agenda for this evening, so at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Public comment, please come to the podium, state your name, and please acknowledge our three-minute speaking role.
There is no way to address all of this in three minutes. This is truly unbelievable, a step back to the dark ages. When I first came, they went PW1, all in favor, aye. PW2, all in favor, aye. Now, you've gone A, B, C, D through K, all in favor, aye. This is a step back to the dark ages where the residents do not know what's going on, and this needs to change. This is unbelievable, how far back we've gone. We had gone all the way to the point where at each vote, residents who just learned about it, when they heard about it from the committee meeting, were able to come to a board meeting and then have a place to comment. You withdrew that. Then you changed the rules so people had to figure out what's an agenda item and what's... It's unbelievable to watch the lack of transparency in this township. I want to thank Commissioner Veigh for at least asking the question to bring up what I had asked of you. I asked specifically, right before the meeting, if you would please read the text. What Mr. Clark said here in answer to Mr. Veigh's question was that they had some leeway to choose how to do it. That wasn't what he said at the last meeting. He said that they couldn't do it that way. Now, there's some confusion with what Mr. Bowman said, that there is apparently some language, but every single person in this room, I have asked, and I can't get an answer. Does anybody see a problem with that? That this is how business in this township is conducted? That something as simple as that, that a resident can't get an answer to? A simple answer? Even when you're asked just to read the text that's relevant? The process of what you're doing to allow developers to come into this township is outrageous. Residents will be challenged constantly instead of enjoying the peaceful use of their own homes. They will be challenged by developers coming in. You have set it so that you can make whatever the new zoning rules are. And that's not what zoning's supposed to do. It's supposed to give you some peace of mind, that this is what your zoning is, and there's a process to go through in order to have it changed. This is absolutely not okay. Documents in this township are being withheld needlessly. A simple question would answer them. Instead, I'm being told to put in a right-to-know, which is ridiculous because it costs everybody much more money. That's absolutely insane, that there is no one that will answer questions. And I also would like, by the way, to ask you to add to the channel, the county meetings, a $409 million budget that all of us need to know what's happening there. I would ask, please, that you add the county to the meetings that are on the channel. So, noon time, sometime when it's not interrupting the schedule. I would actually like, the February 12th meeting for, by the developer for the YMCA was apparently canceled. It's still on the website. People don't know that it's canceled, but it's been canceled. So, the developer has already broken the promises that he made. At the last meeting where they had a chance to argue their case, he said, no, we'll have one February 12th. He left the meeting, and then he said, oh, changed my mind. Not okay. That's not okay. All right? And I still don't understand why my Commissioner Stephen Klein is in charge of anything. If you've read the court documents, this is not what we need in our leadership.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Connie Briggs. I live at 2953 Susquehanna Road, and I'm here to also comment on the meeting that was canceled February 12th. I just want to make sure that the public gets a chance to come back and hear everything before any decisions or votes. I have a bad feeling right now as a resident, and I'm kind of concerned now that there won't be a chance for us to review their documents. And I've already reviewed their documents, and I have problems with their traffic study, and I have a problem with their number of people they think are going to be living in this complex, and now we don't know if they're going to change the whole thing or not, you know, the whole number of units or what they're thinking. So, we would just want to make sure we have a chance to review the new design and planning. And the traffic, the ITE traffic report is flawed, and if you look on the Internet, it's not hard to find information showing that. So, if they're basing their report on that ITE ninth edition traffic report, I think you can find things on the Internet, too. So, I just wanted to leave those comments, and I just ask, please, give us a chance to see the new plans before voting and big decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? If there are none, we'll start with comments, closing comments from the commissioners, starting with Peggy, Commissioner Peggy Myers.
Thank you. Congratulations Eagles, an amazing time for our city and this section of our state. Although my hat is pink, it does have the Eagles emblem on it. Nothing to do with Eagles, but tonight mentioned the Abington Police Athletic League, and as the commissioners know, and most residents know, the Abington Pal exists only on donations, does not get any public money. So, we, every year, hold a concert or a show at the Keswick, and this year's show is Saturday, March 10th at 7:30. The star is Neil Diamond, and he is the renowned tribute artist for Neil Diamond. So, if you're a fan of Neil and the songs, you will love this show. It is an 11-piece band and a singer that sounds more like Neil than Neil does. So, I hope you'll think of that. Tickets are $25, so please, join us.
Commissioner Brodsky, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually have seen Neil Diamond in concert, and he is still the one and only in original. So, with all due deference, it's a good show, support it. But, two very brief comments. Number one, congratulations to Commissioner, newly designated Commissioner Malloy. Congratulations to the Eagles. And no further comments. Daylight getting longer. Pay attention to the roads and the children at the school district, and all have a good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Rothman.
Thank you, President Luker. The one comment tonight is congratulations to Chief Malloy, and a congratulations to all of Abington. We have a great new chief, and we will all benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, President Luker. Yes, echoing the sentiments of Commissioner Rothman, congratulations, Pat, another fine Cardinal Docerty graduate. Also, please join the Angels in Motion, and, speaking of which, the Abington Township Police Department for a blessing bag party. This blessing bag party is being sponsored by CAP and Abington Jefferson Health. This event will be held on February 10th at 11:00 a.m. at the Abington Township Public Trading Center. Angels in Motion, what is that group? Angels in Motion is changing the way those suffering with the disease of addiction are treated, one at a time. They go to the streets, they hand out blessing bags. These blessing bags are filled with peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, clothing, toiletries, and every bag has AIM Resource pamphlet so that those who need the help can seek the help and find it, all the medical information that they need on these pieces of paper. Blessing bags are a perfect way to make that first contact and starting and forming a friendship that builds trust. So, I hope to see you all there. And also, I was at the parade today. How about those Eagles? Come on. Come on. I was there with many, many people, which I will not name them, just in case they weren't granted permission to come, but I was, and it was fantastic. And lastly, as always, when driving through Abington Township, please, drive like your kids live here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hail to the new chief. Look forward to his tenure. Congratulations to all the retirees, and just wanted to address the resident who brought up the cancellation of the February 12th meeting. Thank you for that. We had an, I learned of that Saturday, notified the immediate neighbors on Huntington Road simply because I was meeting with them at the time. Put that out in my own email as of yesterday that the meeting had been canceled. I don't want to speak for the developer, but I would not take that as a lack of, as a cutoff of the conversation with the neighbors. I believe his intent, and again, I'm not speaking for him, but I believe his intent is to incorporate that feedback that he got in the, that they got in the two-hour meeting with the neighbors the other night on the, on January 29th, incorporate that into like a reworked redesign and bring that forward through the process again. But, prior to that taking place, I think he intends to bring the current proposal to the Planning Commission on February 27th. So, that's the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting in this room at 7:30, but that, you should confirm that on the township website, of course, before heading out, and I will spread the word on that. But he wants to get comments on the proposal, which I assume will likely be a lot of what was said on the, on January 29th, and put those comments into the redesign as well. So, and then start the process over, community meetings, go back to the Planning Commission. So, we're a long way from any final resolutions or any meetings, you know, despite what anyone may be saying or worried about. So, just wanted to let you know. And thank you for reminding me to reiterate those items. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President. Congratulations to Chief Malloy. I know we're in great hands. It's been a pleasure to work with him so far, and we're looking forward to the next few years with him. I had the privilege of spending a few hours in the emergency department of Abington Hospital a few nights ago, and the place was packed, mostly with flu patients. So, please, if you haven't already, and you can, please get your flu shot. Make sure you're checking on your neighbors, make sure you're washing your hands, and just make sure everybody stays safe around you. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bowman.
Just goodbye to Mr. Mateo, and to Ed, and to Chief Livinggood, three longtime, long-serving good Abington people, and certainly Rosalyn. We still need Ed, and I'm sure he'll help us out over there on a continuing basis. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zepo.
Congratulations to Chief Pat Malloy. No other comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. Well, congratulations to all of them. I'm not going to mention all their names. But I am going to mention, and I know it's really cold out, but the Fourth of July will be here any minute, and that is, that parade that we have in Glenside is totally paid for by donations. So, we have a run that's in my husband's memory. It's called Keep the Parade Running, and it's April 14th, it's 8:00 a.m. It's the runner start. There was, it is a walk, too. And so, you can go to glensidejuly4th, with the numeral 4, TH, event.com, and you can sign up to walk or run. And it's really a fun thing because a walk goes through a great neighborhood, and it starts at the North Penn, the FW. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Veigh.
Just want to echo the congratulations to our new chief. I'm very excited to work with him in his upcoming tenure. Other than that, no comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to congratulate Chief Malloy. That has a really great ring to it. And just to express my profound gratitude to the retirees, Ed Michelau, Larry Mateo, Eileen Marks, excuse me, and, pardon me, who else retired? Oh.
Chief Livinggood.
Hello, Chief John Livinggood, who is one of the most honorable men I've ever met. Just a quick reminder that on Saturday, February 24th, right here in Ward 11's Public Works Facility on Flori Lane, 9:00 to noon is anything with a plug, electronics recycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Veigh, I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Heckler.
Thank you, President Luker. I don't think this requires a roll call, so. I thought Judge Furman said it very well this evening, that today was about celebrating the hometown team. Whether it was the events in the city today that I also had the pleasure of participating in, or here tonight, I mean, we've heard stories about dedication, teamwork, commitment, and camaraderie, whether it's those who have served, Ed, Chief Livinggood, Larry, or those assuming new roles, Chief Malloy, and also, welcome Amy to your new role. I think the orderly succession planning that the township manager has put into place ensures that the township will remain a place that people want to come and live and raise their families, and I'm impressed by what I saw tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Heckler. Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you. I want to congratulate Pat Malloy, our new chief, and say goodbye to our retirees, and I know a number of people have said that, gone through the roll call of them. We have a lot of them right now.
of them. We have a lot of them right now. I want to also say that hello to Amy. And a couple announcements are, in addition to the February 10th Blessing Bag event, which I will also be at, on February 11th, this Sunday, there is going to be an open house for the Interfaith Food Cupboard, which recently moved to Easton Road on, right in the heart of Roslyn. The, it's there on a temporary basis, and they're having an open house from 1:00 to 3:00. It's, oh, I don't have the address, but it's right by Specialty Floors at the corner of Woodland and Easton Road. And they are accepting donations, or you can just come in and see the new setup, and they're fine with that. So, two good events coming up to help people this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. And in closing, before we adjourn for the evening, I want to, just a brief one, welcome to Amy Montgomery to the township, joining the Abington family. And lastly, to our, our meeting secretary, Liz, in the rear. I don't know if you can show her on camera, but Liz does a human's job every meeting, taking minutes, and gives me cues when I'm going to make a mistake or not. So, thank you, Liz, for everything you do, and for all the work you do back there in obscurity. So, on behalf of all the commissioners, thank you. And with that, if there's no other further business, well, thank you for attending the meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.